There would need to be arrangements to provide someone else, yes ma'am. If he were removed by the council, you'd certainly need to look toward to appointing someone else. Advertising the position of potential other candidates, yes.
Is the relationship, it's not an employee relationship, it's a contractual.
I would think that it's a contractual relationship.
And the clause probably is in there that we can end it whenever, or either party chooses without any legal ramifications.
I don't think there's a contract. It's just an appointment. I think all of those positions for the judge, the judge pro tem, the solicitor and the public defender are all by appointment. Appointed by the council and removed by the council with or without reason. I don't think there's any legal.
No legal entanglement if we discontinue them.
That's correct. It's not an employment relationship. I don't think there are any legal issues at all if you choose to remove him or keep him.
Have you spoken to him?
I have.
Or Ed, either one of you?
I don't know if Mr. Moon has. I have. He's still practicing. I've seen him in court several times recently and communicated with him today about this position.
So the bar association is not concerned enough to disbar him?
I don't think the bar, I don't think the state bar would take any action until the case is resolved.
Well then, why should we?
That's why I'm not. It's not my decision. And it's not city administration's decision.
We should follow your lack of right of devotion.
Certainly a course of action you can choose.
It's not something you have to decide tonight for sure.
When is this court date?
Oh, I have no idea.
Talking months or weeks?
I would not expect this to be resolved anytime soon. Months at a minimum would be my guess.
What did we do when, and I wasn't a part of the council at that time, and it's a little bit different situation in that it was a role, a very active role, your role, I think. We had a similar situation where there was some misconduct or some cause for concern about a person in the city who turned a position. Am I right? You all following me? Okay, so what did we do in that instance? Did we suspend? Did we terminate the agreement?
That's right. Council ended that relationship and then I don't remember how we did process as far as applicants went, but I think it was just a recommendation.
For the replacement?
Right.
Yeah, I don't remember. I know it was chosen.
That was when Jeff Todd was appointed.
That's right.
Didn't we have every?
The council didn't take any action, they just denied reappointment the next year.
Okay, that's right. Because it is an annual appointment, isn't it?
As is, this position is an annual appointment. He's served previously, he's been appointed at least once previously, and he was appointed this January. And it's up to the council whether you take no action, but his position will be open for reappointment again at the end of this year, the end of this calendar year.
It would seem that we would kind of follow what we've done in the past in similar situations. We don't have to, we realize that, but hearing all that you've had to say about the view of this from other stakeholders in the whole situation with him, I would think, I don't know that I see any reason that we would do differently than what we did before. I know it's not on the table for both, not now, but.
That's correct. I think ultimately the council would just need to decide whether it wants it on the agenda to take action or not. This is a work session, it's not, the city manager and I are not proposing that you take any specific action tonight regardless of what you decide.
Anytime anybody wants to do that, make a motion.
I think it's safe to say that we all feel that allegations that have been made against him are serious, and we take that serious. And being a representative of the city, we do find it unacceptable for someone in a position like he has to have charges, the accusations made, things that made. And it's all been in the news, so it's not like we've talked about anything that someone doesn't know. So it might be a warning moving forward that we have zero powers over things like, you know, felonies.
And every time it was in the news, they listed West Point, his name was stuck behind it, every time I saw it, West Point.
It's very disappointing, to say the least. But I would also say that it is right and fair to observe due process.
All right, anything else? So you got it?
For the majority court, yes sir.
Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda is the board and committee appointments. We'll be bringing up, next meeting, Trudy Johnson for the municipal planning board. Any questions or comments regarding Trudy for the municipal planning board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the cemetery expansion and recreation field. Ed?
Yes, sir.
So, again, an item that we have talked about in the past, had discussion when the city determined that it was possible to expand the cemetery, we talked about this property that is adjacent to Marseille. So I'll give you a little bit of background. On cemeteries, we have four named cemeteries, and we are running low on available lots. Pinewood Cemetery, we have no lots. Marseille, we have 12 lots. Westview, we have 370, and Eastview, we have zero. Now, it's not an obligation of the city to provide cemetery lots, and that's something that municipal governments have done historically, but many cities don't offer that anymore, and there's, you know, private sector out there that does provide burial places for individuals. So it's not something that the city must do, but we talked about this before, it was evident that the city wanted to continue, at least to offer more on this particular piece of property. On average, we have about 50 burials a year in the city cemetery, so 50 annually. Right now, the cost to purchase a lot is $300 per lot. I can tell you that the cost range that I found online for lots is $550 to $5,000. So we're below even the lowest of lots. The city clerk here, city hall people come in, purchase the plots, and city clerk maintains the records and the maps of those, lays out the graves, and public works maintains our grounds with the inmate crew, and our crews would need it. So of course, we do have a need to expand with only having a few plots left. This particular layout that we've had done shows 270 additional lots. Probably wouldn't totally get that many, or may get a few more, but somewhere in that average, the project would include stormwater management for the site, paving, so we'd have a paved road coming in with turnaround. We'd have the earthwork, which is minimal on this portion of it, the construction services, and we're looking at about $120,000 cost to develop the site. We would also want to update that, the contract basically, or the sale contract that we have for the lots, again, bringing some to the council to increase the cost, at least for anything new that we do in Marseille. But also, we have, we need to update the policies on cremains. It's a bit outdated, and there's some different ways to do that that we currently don't allow, and so we need to look at that. Just a general update, and also, we get more requests now to have above raised markers, bigger markers than just a flush marker, so that's something that we would recommend in this next phase, is to have just a traditional type burial markers in there as well. So anyway, those would come with the project, and I'm going to get a little more into that in a second, but we also own the piece of property that you see on that drawing that is just above where the expansion of the cemetery is. And we are, from the recreation side, we're in need for additional athletic fields. So kind of putting these two projects together, I think, to make it more appealing to get someone to come in and do the work that needs to be done. We would like to include on that lot, the grading of that site, of course, again, we'd have all the stormwater management, get that graded into a multi-use field, grass, a gravel parking lot, a gravel road coming in off of OG Skinner Drive into that, and that cost would be about the same, somewhere around $120,000. So you're looking at about $240,000 project, which makes it, I think, a good project. Funding wise, the cemetery would certainly have to come out of general fund, but we do have sploshed funds to help on the, or to pay for the recreation side. We also would hope that Tripp County, since they provide recreational services, would be interested in maybe providing some in-kind work, helping with the clearing or grading since they have equipment. Certainly, we'd want to ask them. So the ask, is this being on the agenda, is for the council to approve the concept of this overall project, the two pieces, the cemetery and the recreation field? And then we'll put together an RFP for this to go out to bid, and then we can put it out to bid and then come back to the council with those costs, what we've been able to put together as far as partnership goes, and then get y'all to hopefully approve the project.
When you said $300, what is that by? What's that purchase on? How many individual places?
That's one individual plot.
Just one little, okay, but the ones that have eight, that would be what cost?
We don't have any more available.
So that's not even available?
No, sir. They will have had those available since 1980.
So is that $300 Alabama and Georgia residents or just?
Richard, he started, he wanted to answer any specific questions.
What was the question?
Is the $300 for Alabama and Georgia?
$300 a lot, we don't specify location of the purchaser.
Okay.
And we don't give any priority to the city of West Point residents?
No, ma'am.
When you buy, and when those people that own eight places, do they ever have anybody else purchase one of them that's not a family member, or is that just their family?
Yes, sir. I think the original agreement said that they could not sell it for no more than the value, the current value of the, in other words, people can't just come and buy up the city cemetery and then resell it. But they could sell it for the current value of the lot.
Okay, but they can sell it or allow somebody else?
Yes, sir, in that outfit there.
Do people who have plots that they're not going to use come to the city and offer them back to us sometimes?
We haven't, we normally don't buy them if someone comes to me and says they want to sell them back. I just let them get in touch with the funeral homes because they know more about people that might want to buy them, but I just let them have that contract agreement.
And Ed, that's OG Skinner Drive at the top of the diagonal.
That's correct.
You've given a new meaning to the multi-purpose, you've got recreation and cemetery.
If you've been attending your GMA training, you might have seen a course on, you know, recreation is a big thing in cemetery.
You're taking it to a new level.
Yep. So people enjoy going to the cemeteries and just hanging out, walking and relaxing and all kinds of things.
Do you see this recreation field being permanent or a stopgap? Permanent?
It can always be used for, if we expand it somewhere, if we land a lot of what we have right now. So it can, in the near future, if we pulled off soccer football, softball team practicing on things like that, it would be a multi-purpose for the community just at any time, it'd be well used.
I don't know that I heard all of that, the use for the recreational component to this, for community recreation.
I mean, we would use it for how we organize sports, field soccer football, field is well overused, we have no downtime to do maintenance on it. We would love to do, start maintenance on it on May, now we push to June, we have two months to establish some new grass in the middle, and because we're back on it in August, and from our youth leagues and stuff, it's just, I mean, we're going continuously. So we could, on rainy days, we could pull them over here on this called practice multi-purpose field. So, as the lead voter was saying, if we used it for something else, if we got another soccer field on, would it still be used? Yes, it would still be used for the public, and it would be used for the public now, too.
So it would just give us more availability for both?
Yes.
Not delegate one for certain, one area and the other for something else?
So we'll have that on the agenda for approval of the concept plan, and we'll move forward from there.
All right, do you want to move on then to the text amendment on the zoning ordinance?
I do, and you've got some information in your packet that Dennis prepared, this was for him to present, so I'm filling in as best I can. So there are some items that Dennis has had come across his desk for some time with various items, but he's now kind of packaged together to bring forward to council. Tonight, we'll look at these, then this will go to the planning board, and they will vote to either approve, approve, recommend, or deny all of these, and then it will come to the council with that, with their recommendation. So again, these vary, so they're all distinctly pretty much different. The first one is the definition for townhouse. Again, we've got a couple of townhouse projects that are hopefully going to come through, and so there's some language associated with the definition that is really something that's covered in the international business, sorry, international building code. It really shouldn't have been in the ordinance, so if you look at that definition, he is striking out the section that says separated by a four-hour rated firewall as per the international building code. In the alternative, a two-hour firewall may be utilized if the entire structure is protected by a sprinkler system. And then at the bottom, it says for a distance greater than or equal to 80% of the overall unit height. And again, that's the thing with the firewall. So those things are found in other code, and they're just confusing to have it here whenever somebody's looking at our code, so it creates problems for Dennis, as he's talked to developers about townhomes. So that's the reason why he's requesting for that to be taken, that language to be taken out.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question about that? You're saying that we're double-dipping by, isn't it here, it's also somewhere else? Or are we eliminating the four-hour?
No, no, it's in the international building code, so that'd still be held as that standard. It's just not the appropriate places to have it as in our code, because it may change. It may change to six hours, it may change to, so if it changes, then we'd have to go in and amend our, we'd have to amend that particular thing, so typically we don't have it.
I hope Dennis can get to the thing before six hours.
Any other questions on that one? The second one is, under R1, single-family dwelling district, was listed bed and breakfast establishments. That is not typical in a zoning ordinance to have that in a R1, single-family dwelling district. It is also located in the general commercial district, which is where it should be. So if someone wanted to have a bed and breakfast, then they would have to, if it were in our residential area, they would have to come to have that rezoned. We haven't had any of those for many, I don't recall any coming through really that we've had. That's the appropriate zoning for those, and again, that's what Dennis is trying to get to, is to protect residential areas from a business being put in R1 residential and being put in the proper classification, which would be general commercial.
So this was not in there when we, when we had the situation in residential areas? This was?
It is. It is in R1, single-family dwelling. I don't know that the city's ever had one. And I don't know if it was single-family residential, it could have been commercial, because some of our areas where residential is, is currently commercial property. So I don't know the distinction, it just, it shouldn't be in residential.
He says, he's Seventh Street, is what I'm referring to, that's where the two I'm aware of existed?
It could, and I don't know the zoning there, so it could have been residential, because it would be allowable under the ordinance currently.
So today, we're revising this so that that would not be the case?
That's correct. Take it out of residential. Good on that one? Third one is, under sign regulations, we have a Interstate 85 commercial sign node overlay. That allows, I don't know the exact area that the node exists in, it's so many feet away from the two interchanges, exit six and exit two, that allows for a different signage than is in our QDC, which is our overlay district for commercial. That was done in order for a company like Love's that locates right there to have a different sign package. Basically, they can have a taller sign than they would be allowed to have anywhere else on the commercial corridor because it's on the interstate. Only on the interstate that we allow for outdoor advertising, the billboards. You can't put a billboard anywhere but on the interstate corridor in West Point. So the change here is that in the sign node overlay, it says that you can have one high-rise sign of 180 feet and 1,020 square feet of sign area, and it says, "In lieu of a billboard on the site." Well, again, we only allow billboards to be on the interstate, and we have a section in the ordinance that deals directly with billboards inside the ceiling. It's basically all we do. Our only regulation is really to say you can have it on the interstate. The state pretty much sets the standards on billboards. So we'll strike that out, and if someone wants to apply for, if they have a high-rise sign and they want to apply for a billboard and they have the property to do it, we think it's justifiable for them to have a billboard as well. Again, the state is the one that's going to approve those, they can only be, I think it's every 400 feet between those signs on the interstate, and that's, again, that's state requirements, not ours. There's only so much we can regulate. Billboards, very strong lobby in Atlanta, so they're pretty well protected. I see Alex shaking his head over there.
Do we have any situations that would be grandfathered in that currently exist?
No, no. You know, again, this is, I don't know if Love's has approached Dennis about wanting to do a billboard on their property, I don't know if they've got enough there.
But that's on the interstate.
It's on the interstate, right. But what we're telling them is, since they have a high-rise sign, they can't have a billboard. I don't know that we need to be telling Love's that, again, that would go back to the state really regulates those signs. All our ordinance says is, you can't have one anywhere else in the city except for on the interstate corridor.
Yeah, I'm asking about anywhere else in the city that's convenience stores and anything like that, there's not, we don't have?
No.
Anything?
No.
Another situation?
The next H there, it's the same as the first one. The QDC has regulations elsewhere that govern the height, size, and construction of the motor vehicle fuel station signs. So all that area that is struck in there is taken out. So basically, all it's saying is, you can have two motor vehicle fuel station signs, but it doesn't talk about the regulations because those are already covered in the QDC, so there's no need to duplicate that language. We want to keep them under the Quality Development Corridor rules as much as we can and make those work together. Some signs are outside of that, some signs are within. So that's a good, that's a good, just clarifying, because when you're dealing with these companies like, Love's is a good example for us because that's the most signs we've ever approved on one site, it gets very confusing when they read through our ordinance and you have all these different sections with the same language in it. If you've got 10 feet instead of 12 feet, then it's a conflict over which one they can or can't have. So Dennis is just trying to clear that up for the next time. Number four is residential accessory structures, which is fences, and the request is to change in the rear yard to a, from a six to an eight-foot fence, and in the front yard from a three to a four-foot fence. We have a lot of requests for higher fences for both back and front yard, so I think that's really just a, that's based on the citizens of West Point wanting a higher fence. And we have a lot of eight-foot fences that have been put up over the years, too, it's hard to keep your thumb on that, so. We've got, under the area and dimensional regulation section, what this does is by district, it sets lot sizes, setbacks, density, minimum lot depth, and maximum height. So I'm just going to go through, if y'all can see those in your packet, the ones that are, that have been struck through, I'll try to hit all those. So we go to R1, so the density unit per acre is increased from four units to five units. Again, these are, there's a couple reasons, I should have said that before I got into this, a couple reasons why. Number one, as a city, as an urban area, we want density, because we are, our footprint's only so large unless people annex in outside it, but then we have to expand sewer system, the water system. We don't get those electric customers because they're outside of our territory. There's a lot of reasons why that's good for us as a city. Also, developers are requesting these things because for them, that's how they make money, is put more units per acre. So that's certainly a part of it. So, um, that's, that's, that's certainly a part of it too. So the R2, multifamily, uh, from ten units to fourteen units. For condos, from six units to fourteen units. And that's for one acre, once again. And then for townhomes, that, just strike that two thousand four hundred, um, I can't read, I'll mark it out, whatever that says below it out. It's a half acre, that's what that's showing, which would be seven units, but for, for an acre, it would be fourteen units for townhomes. So twenty-two thou, he's got twenty-two thousand five hundred feet, which is approximately a half an acre. You could do seven townhomes on a half an acre. I, I think this wasn't intended to put there, but the maximum, uh, you could do per acre is fourteen.
As this was written, to me, this would say that you could put fourteen in a half acre, by the way it's written.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I talked to Dennis about it today, but he, he, um, he'll, he'll get that cleaned up, and we'll, we'll make sure that that reads. I made, I made sure that I understood a half an acre is seven units. Um, and then single-family, we'd go from five to, um, seven. And again, this is not just, this is a, this is, though we're quite a period of time, these things have kinda come up and collected all of these, so. So on the general commercial, the minimum lot frontage from one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred and fifteen feet. Um, commercial property is expensive in West Point, although there's a lot of places, but it is here. The majority of the, not some majority, many businesses that we're talking to now, they're not, they want a smaller footprint as they can get because they wanna keep their costs down. And, uh, the model now for a lot of, like I say, a fast-paced restaurant, it's more, y'all know, it's more drive-through now than it is walk-in. I mean, I think those things have changed, and some businesses just don't want a very large footprint. They want it as small as they, as they can. Um, the central business district storefront, now that, that fifty should not have a strike through at the top. Just the twenty-five feet at the bottom should be fifteen feet. Uh, again, we have smaller storefronts in downtown. The problem is that when somebody goes to sell that smaller storefront, and whenever they do their due diligence, they'll look at our ordinance and they'll say, "But your minimum, your minimum size is twenty-five feet, and this one's only eighteen feet." So Dennis has to clarify that, he has to send them letters and go through a whole process to try to help them understand that it's, it is operating, it is an independent lot, it is an independent survey, um, so this will just, this will help clean that up. We already have it exists, this is helped clean things up to make, make it easier.
So this is a priority too?
Yes, that, that one in particular is, yes. Uh, the commercial with CHV from one fifty to one fifteen, and the maximum height is one hundred feet. That is, uh, that's heavy commercial. Then the, uh, I-1 and the I-1A is a hundred feet maximum height from sixty-five, and the I-2 is minimum lot frontage from two hundred to one fifty and maximum height one hundred feet. Some of our industrials that exist today are, are above the sixty-five foot limit, because it's just part of manufacturing. Kia's certainly higher than that, so.
Jump back on the central business district, where you've got side yard setbacks and rear setbacks on buildings that above one another. There is no side yard, there is no rear.
That's right.
Shouldn't we just take that out completely?
Well, that's, so you've got some though that are not.
Right.
So the ones that aren't would have to meet that requirement.
Okay, so freestanding has to, the ones that just don't have to?
If it's zero lot line, then that's the storefront, basically.
All right.
I think that's the clarification there. And that's all of it.
So this is going to the planning board?
Yes, sir, to go to the planning board.
And have all this again?
Yes, sir. They'll make a recommendation for you, yes, sir.
All right, any other questions on that?
Turn light of truck reach.
One ten?
Hundred foot.
Hundred foot?
What was the height we were asking for? I saw that. What was the max height?
Hundred foot.
What was it? Okay. All righty, I guess that's everything on our agenda tonight. Uh, the items on the business meeting for May eighth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty PM will be the public hearing, the text amendment to the zoning ordinance we just spoke about, the board and committee appointment, cemetery expansion and recreation field concept, uh, text amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, oh, it's a public hearing, I'm sorry, I didn't read that correctly. We're gonna have a public hearing on the meeting first, and then we'll have the text amendment, we'll actually vote on it. And then the, finally, the assignment assumption of equipment bond documents and lease. And then the, um, were you asking us to add the?
If.
Amendment for the recycling to?
That's right.
To this business?
To add that language, yes, where we can go ahead and get that in process to notify the public and move forward with it.
All right, is everybody good with that? Anybody have a problem with that? All right, put that on the agenda as well.
Yeah, Charles?
Yes.
When you get it, Charles, I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry I didn't get to you for the totality of your presentation, you spoke to some grants. You said something related to grants that were in the works. I don't think you mentioned any tax credits, uh, associated with COVID relief. Are we eligible for the, I guess, the last, the final one, the PRC, Employee Retention Credit? Are we eligible for that? Have we applied?
Um, no, we'd not applied, applied for anything like Employee Retention Credit or anything. I don't know that, I don't, I'm not familiar with that.
I think that's the last way you've, any COVID relief.
We applied for some other, um, infrastructure-type grants, but we've not been successful. Those, those dollars have all gone to other communities, so. I don't know of anything else that we're eligible for, but we'll certainly look into that.
Can you find out this?
Sure.
About COVID, about COVID relief, one of the.
It's like the PPP that everybody got.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be eligible for that.
Yeah, I agree. What are the visions we're getting at?
It's my understanding that everything, again, it's my understanding, uh, everything that would be funneled through the state that we would be eligible for, um, that, all that money's gone. There's no more state money from the federal government, um, that we would be eligible.
Maybe, um, cities that, you know, maybe municipalities are not eligible for it, but I think it would definitely was to check to see.
Yeah, we'll look, sure, sure.
And other organizations, colleges, and, you know, and it's about to, I mean, we're about to miss out on it if we haven't already.
We'll share it up.
Yes.
I'm moving with John.
Well, yeah, we gotta have announcements. And then we'll, then, then I'll, then I'll call on you again.
All right.
We'll thank all the city staff for your faithfulness, for showing up, and the public that's here, and I wanna welcome back Megan for this tonight. So, um, anybody have any announcements tonight?
I do. Uh, Thursday, May the fourth is the National Day of Prayer. City of West Point will have an observance at eleven o'clock that morning, just outside of City Hall, around the Black, well, it's close to the Black Belt, we can get blocked and, and bring in over some, uh, chairs, sponsored by the police department and the city and local churches. So come out and join us, eleven o'clock that day.
May the fourth?
May the fourth.
And then on Saturday, May the sixth, before we get back together again, eight AM, out at the side of the former Bethel Baptist Church on Highway twenty-nine, is a volunteer work day for people to come out and do cleanup for the tornado victims out there. So encourage everybody to go, um, online to, um, ChattahoocheeFullerCenter.com and fill out a volunteer form, and come out and help us pick up debris, and big thanks to the city street crews for coming out once before, and we hope to have you back out again that following Monday for all the stuff we pile up again on that Saturday. So, uh, we're gonna try to get, in fact, uh, hold your feet to the fire, I think we're getting Lynette and Bally to send their sweat cars out too, from what I'm hearing, and possibly even LaGrange, so we should have a, take the burden, not solely on you and LaGrange this time, that'll be good. But go out, sign up, and come out and help pick up some limbs and branches. Did you have something you wanted to say?
I did wanna move with John.
Okay, well, we have, do you have a second?
Sure.
All right, all in favor?
All right.